Good evening. Once again, welcome to the first city council meeting of July 2014. To begin the meeting, I would like to ask everyone to stand up for a moment of silent meditation. I would like to ask Mr. Malley to lead us in the pleasurable audience.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Vasquez.
Present.
Council LaPlante.
Here.
Council Toomey.
Here.
Council Reyes.
Present.
Council Almonte.
Present.
Council Aquino.
Present.
Council Bernal.
Present.
Council Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Present.
And Council President Maldonado.
Present. Well, for the first time tonight, we have a very short list of public participation. I would like to call the first participant, Kendry Vasquez. Please identify yourself.
Good evening, my name is Kendris Vasquez, City Councilor from District C, 381 Hampshire Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts. Once again, good evening, councilors, and Happy New Year. Yes, Happy New Year to all of you. Today's the new fiscal year 2015 for the city of Lawrence, and we should be celebrating because that means that we will have an opportunity to continue to make our city better in 2015, which starts today. Happy New Year to all the residents as well, because this is your city, you should be celebrating with all of us. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that, Mr. President, because we don't often have the opportunity to wish ourselves and celebrate with each other the great things that we're doing as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Malley?
Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera campaign promise of safe Lawrence only possible you as our elected official and Mayor Rivera support of our police department and the senior officers' union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police officers and support their union. Our city has been so great because of our hard-working DPW workers. With a few workers and the best leadership, our DPW workers are the best in the nation. We the citizen demand of you support of our DPW and wonderful leadership. Fire after fire, our brave firefighters sacrificed their safety so our citizen be safe. We the citizen demand of you and the Mayor Rivera support our firefighters and their union. Our public school with the leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh has moving forward turnaround plan has made good progress. We the citizen support our teachers and the union. The teachers such as Mr. Mendez on medical leave from Lawrence High School must know eighty-three thousand citizen are supporting and behind him. In fourteen months term of your office, we the citizen demand of you support of our police officers and the senior officers' union, support our DPW worker and our firefighters. Be advocate for our citizen. Thank you.
Mr. Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell. I reside 34 Cross Street in the city. At the risk of hurting anyone's feelings, are we here to revote on something that didn't pass? Seems like that's the only excuse for council meetings the last month or so. Few questions for you. Why was an executive session required last night? You mentioned the lawsuit, you mentioned an individual's name in public session. Why? Isn't the public mature enough to hear the information firsthand? Now that we have a new budget in place, is there time and money to get some answers about the Tony Coco situation and why one of his neighbors is allowed to run a home construction business out of his home in the same neighborhood? Last question, is the public going to be able to find out how much money was left in the various city agencies' budget at the close of business as of yesterday? Specifically, I think a lot of Lawrence citizens, myself included, would be interested to see how close the Lawrence Fire Department's fire suppression unit came to zeroing out their salary, their overtime, and their holiday pay accounts. I'm pretty sure Mayor Rivera will be resting easy knowing that his phone number will not be posted on Local 140 by Lawrence Fire Department, Local 146 on Facebook every time there's a brownout situation. It's ironic that Local 146 never posted their phone number or the number of our former financial wizard, ex-Mayland Tegwa, for any possible explanations on how the brownout situation would have been avoided if the election results had been different. I fully understand that money in politics is a give-and-take situation. The taxpayers, both local and statewide, give money to the city. The city in turn gives money to various employee groups, and these employee groups being good employees, they take it. But when the contract time comes up and someone mentions that some of these employees should give up some of their benefits, it's like we've blasphomed their sacred contract. Also, in a contract negotiations or a private deal where no taxpayers allowed. Why? That just doesn't seem right. I thank you for your time.
We're going to go into... Yes. I would like to enter a motion to approve the minutes of June 3, 2014.
To move?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second. Any comments, questions, changes? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. We're going to take Document 26414. Mr. LaPlante?
Yep.
I'm sorry, we just approved, I thought, the minutes from the June 3 meeting?
Yes.
Did we not do the June 17 meeting? We don't have those?
No, wait, that's going to be...
For June 10?
Okay. Okay.
So, we have 617.
Counselors, good evening. As we continue on, this is the best part of the meeting, in my opinion, every week, but as we continue on, what I call our achiever series, the people who are really making a difference in our city of Lawrence, the people who have risen to the top of whatever it is that they're doing, whether it be students, or athletes, or workers, or businesses, whoever it is, it gives me great pride and to join in all of you, frankly, to honor and recognize individuals who are truly making a difference and have achieved something of note in our city. So, this evening, I want to welcome both of you here tonight. Most specifically, I want to congratulate you, Maria, and read this resolution. Be it known that we, the members of the city council of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and through this resolution hereby applaud and recognize the achievement of Maria Victoria Pachardo for being named Reina Senorita Semana Hispana 2014, or the queen. Whereas Maria Victoria Pachardo was born on July 20, 1993, to Victor Pachardo and Rediza, Pachardo and Bonnie Dominican Republic, and is the youngest of four children. Whereas the pageant is extremely competitive, and the judges award points for open dance, answering questions posed by the judges, modeling, as well as scores for personal appearance. Whereas the honor and pride Maria brings upon her family and community for this achievement provides positive attention to the Lawrence community, which also reflects honor and pride to the city of Lawrence. In addition to her social achievement, Maria came to the United States from Canada with her family at the age of 12. She graduated from Lawrence High School, earning a four-year scholarship, and has attended Merrimack College and expects to graduate next year with a master's degree in commercial administration and community service. Wherefore we, the members of the Lawrence City Council, hereby applaud and recognize the achievement of Maria Victoria Pachardo for being named Reina Senorita Semana Hispana 2014, and hereby set our hands and cause the seal of the city of Lawrence to be affixed on this the first day of July in the year 2014. It is signed by the entire Lawrence City Council. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. I am more than welcome to be part of the Manispana at the same time. I am very glad to be one of the first ones to receive this recognition. Also, I am more than welcome to represent all the young adults here in my community to Lawrence. Thank you so much.
There's going to be other resolutions. It's going to take us a few more minutes, which is Document 22814. We're going to move ahead and then go back to that. We're going to have the public hearing, Document 3214.
Document 32, 2014. Notice hereby given the city council hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 1, 2014, in city council chambers, 200 Columbus Street at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances by deleting a paragraph from prohibited parking on certain streets at all times. Hale Street, north side from intersection of Devonshire to a point twenty feet west of intersection of Devonshire Street. And Hale Street, south side from intersection of Devonshire Street to a point twenty feet west of intersection, intersection of Devonshire Street. And further by deleting the following paragraph from the same code section, Hale Street, south side, fifty-five feet east of intersection of Devonshire Street to a point eighty-five feet east of intersection of Devonshire Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on June 22.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to Document 3214? If there is none, closing public participation, councilors. If any comments, I'd like to enter a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it.
Council President? Council President?
Let's take out of order a motion to take out of order, Document 22814.
Council President?
Yes.
Just on the last item, I apologize. Could we just waive the 30 days on that? We waive the 30 days on that?
To waive the 30 days?
I'm making a motion to waive the 30 days.
There is a motion to waive the 30 days, and it has been properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. Council Almonte?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, and going right along with the recognitions and the accomplishments of the kids and the people who put in time for the kids of the city of Lawrence, right now I would like to call up Jose Madera. Thank you for being here. Jose Madera runs a boxing club here in the city of Lawrence, and it's called Intense 978 Boxing Club. And here are the accolades. Whereas Intense 978 Boxing Club was founded in January 2010 by Jose Madera. Whereas Intense 978 Boxing Club has sponsored six Golden Glove finalists, two winning the entire tournament, one advancing to national Golden Gloves. Whereas Johnny Rosa, 178-pound weight class, placed fifth in the country and first in New England. Whereas Jose Madera was elected head coach of the New England team and went on to compete to the Golden Glove Nationals. Intense 978 Boxing Club competed June 18, 2014, in Hot Springs, Arkansas, where they competed in the title nationals. Intense 978 Boxing is a nonprofit organization run by volunteers in an effort to keep kids off the streets, make champions, and good citizens. Wherefore, on behalf of the members of the Lawrence City Council, for the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and throughout this proclamation, hereby recognize and honor the Intense 978 Boxing Club of Lawrence, Massachusetts, Jose Madera, for their charitable generosity to the city of Lawrence, and hereby set our hand and cause the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed here too, on this first day of July 2014. Signed by Council President and all of the other members of the Lawrence City Council. Thank you for your patience. Now, these are some of the kids that have accomplished, and therefore I ask for Adrian Sosa. Is he here? He's not here. I'll go through them, there's a bunch. Johnny Rosa. Johnny Rosa is a 178-pound class and a 2013 graduate of the Great Lawrence Technical High School, holding three titles, which is the 2012 Rocky Marciano Title, 2014 Central Golden Glove Champion, and the 2014 Tournament of Champions. Wherefore, on behalf of the members of the city council of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, and throughout this proclamation, hereby recognize and honor Johnny Rosa for his athletic accomplishments, and hereby set our hands and cause of the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed here on to this first day of July 2014. Congratulations. Nisha Santana, is she here? Congratulations. Nisha is a young lady whom, through Facebook, I was able to help get her, well, myself and a bunch of the city councilors here were able to get her to Florida, where she's going to be fighting. What do you, tell them all what you're going to be doing. That's right. Whereas Nisha is the 102-pound weight class at the age of 13 in grade seven at the Gilmet School, holding the 2013 Silver Mittens Championship Title. Wherefore, on behalf of the members of the Lawrence City Council and the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and throughout this proclamation, hereby recognize and honor Nisha Santana for her athletic accomplishments, and hereby set our hands and cause of the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed here on to this first day of July 2014. Okay, Miguel Teo? One of the framing handbooks. We have people here, we have kids that are like from all over the place. We have another kid who's from Lancaster, New Hampshire. He didn't make it either. But we have kids here that are from like everywhere, and they come to the city of Lawrence to show off what it is that they can do. So, Cassius Chaney, is he here? All right. Hello, congratulations. Whereas Cassius is in the 201 pound weight class and won the 2014 Title National Championship in Hot Springs. Wherefore, on behalf of the members of the city council and the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and throughout this proclamation, hereby recognize and honor Cassius Chaney for his athletic accomplishments, and hereby set our hands and cause the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed here on to this first day of July 2014, and is signed by all the council members. Michael Santana? Can you believe it? Whereas Michael is in the 65-pound weight class, and at nine years old is in grade four at the Wetherby School. He holds three titles. The 2012 Silver Glove Championship Title, the 2013 Junior Olympic Champion, and the 2013 Silver Glove Championship Title. Wherefore, on behalf of the members of the Lawrence City Council, Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and throughout this proclamation, hereby recognize and honor Michael Santana for his athletic accomplishments, and hereby set our cause and seal of the city of Lawrence to be affixed here on to this first day of July 2014. Signed by the Lawrence City Council. Augustine Maures. Augustine, sorry. Augustine is of Puerto Rican and Apache Indian ancestry, born and raised in the great city of Lawrence. Whereas at the age of 23, Augustine has fought over 60 amateur bouts, winning the Golden Gloves Title, the USA, New England's, and Rocky Marciano Title before turning professional in 2011, and is 6-0 with one draw, and three of his wins came by a way of knockout. Whereas Augustine is a proud parent of two sons, Augustine Jr. and Damian. Augustine is training with Coach Farley for his eighth professional bout, which will take place on July 26, 2014, versus former New England 130-pound champion Joey Perez at Club Royale in Boston. On behalf of the members of the Lawrence City Council, Lawrence, Massachusetts, and by and throughout this proclamation, we hereby recognize and honor Augustine Maures for his athletic accomplishments, and hereby set our hands and cause of the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed here and on to this first day of July 2014. Rory Stapleton, didn't make it. Haley Cancel, she didn't make it. Oh, that would have been nice to have met her. Coach Sean Farley? Great to meet you. Whereas Coach is from Methuen, Mass., who has boxed at the teenager, began his career as a trainer in '02, and since has trained numerous Golden Glove Champions. He currently trains out of Intense 978 Boxing Club, where he assists in the amateur team and also trains his top prospects, which is Alexis Santos and Augustine Maures. On behalf of the members of the Lawrence City Council and for the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and throughout this proclamation, hereby recognize and honor the Alexis... Ooh, you made a boo-boo. Recognize Sean Farley for his accomplishments, and hereby set our hands and the cause of the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed on this first day of July 2014. You messed up so bad. If you give me one second, I can do that next part of the mission, one second. I am so sorry, it didn't get printed out. But Alexis Santos, please come out. Congratulations. Alexis Santos is 24 years old, born and raised in Lawrence, Massachusetts, to the parents of Dominican ancestry. He was educated in the Lawrence Public School system and is currently finalizing his associate's degree in Northern Essex Community College. Alexis began his amateur boxing career under his current trainer, Sean Farley, at the age of 12. His amateur accomplishments include five state champions. At age 19, he turned professional and compiled an undefeated record of 13 wins and zero losses. Before, where were we? Before, I'm sorry. Before suffering a severe knee injury, including an ACL tear, at the first round of a NABF Junior Heavyweight Title Fight, despite the seriousness of the deliberating injury, he continued to box for three rounds before his trainer stopped the fight. This was done in the attempt to prevent further injury to the above-mentioned knee. Alexis is looking forward to resuming his career upon successful surgery and rehabilitation. He is grateful for the support of his family, friends, and the city of Lawrence. And we, the city of Lawrence... And we, the city of Lawrence, are proud to put, to affix, when we do, our signature onto his certificate, and I will get that to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, big guy. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Apache, huh?
Okay, we're going to keep moving. Item 26414 is to me. You would like to make a motion to withdraw this document, understand?
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw that from this.
There's a motion on the floor to withdraw Document 26414. Is there a second? Motion has been made and properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. Document 25014, Chairman of the Bureau of General Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document 25014 is a year-end transfers between departmental accounts. As we are all aware, the fiscal year 2014 ended yesterday, and as a result of that, in order to eliminate any potential deficits between accounts and, you know, as we officially close the books for the city of Lawrence, it is important that we make any necessary year-end transfers that will need to be approved before... year-end transfers that will need to be approved before July 15th to be able to comply with state law. And I make that informal motion to approve.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any questions, Mr. Iannello?
I just have, as I informed the Finance Committee when we, when we met on these year-end transfers, the year-end, the year-end just ended yesterday, so I just have a slight update to what some of those transfers may be, because there were a couple of late additions. If I could just hand those out, I have a package, and I've highlighted in yellow the additional or the changes between what I submitted last week and this week, and yesterday.
Counsel President?
Yes.
Could we then ask Counselor Vazquez to amend his motion to include the updated version?
Definitely.
And also to include, even though we think it's only ordinances where we have to deal with the 30 days, just in case, include the waiving of the 30 days.
This motion needs to waive the 30 days.
Okay. Obviously, you made the motion and you seconded the motion, so you accept the change, the...
But the update is a word submitted to us tonight.
Mr. Iannello, why don't you go ahead and give us the details?
Yes, this is, as I indicated, the Budget Finance Committee. These are year-end transfers between, within, generally within each department's own accounts. Occasionally, there was a transfer that was needed from outside their account, and we need permission from that department head to transfer funds from their budget into someone else's budget. So all of the transfers coming from a different department came from one of my divisions, so I've given permission for that to happen. There are very, very few, there are minor transfers, almost all departments. I want to commend all the departments for managing within their own budgets. They may have had some line item changes or some shortfalls in certain line items, but they were made, able to make up those transfers within their own accounts from a different line item. And there's a three-page transfer here. I highlighted in yellow the changes from the, from the last, from the one I submitted on May 15th to get on the council agenda. And I submitted that as a placeholder just so, to avoid having a special meeting. So here's the, these, the last three transfers on page three are the largest ones that came in, and if I could just explain those briefly, just take a moment. The, the one, the third from the bottom is $28,061, and that was from within DPW accounts to pay for. They had a recent retirement, and of course, as, as the counselors know, when, when people retire, there are owed accruals upon their departure. And we really appreciate the Department of Public Works being able to find those severance payments within their accounts. They had to do a lot of hard work to get there, but they were able to do it. The next one below is the Police Department Operations. They had some medical bills for injured-on-duty officers, but again, they were able to find those, to pay those bills from within their own accounts. It was $9,197.67. And the last one, what is, it's called Employee Benefits Medicare, but that is the Medicare Tax Payments for all city employees. We, because we did have some extra severance payments and we did have a 2.5% increase granted to a few of the unions in the past year, that line item, we're transferring $30,000 into that line item just to make sure we didn't have a shortfall. And again, those are, were transferred within my operating accounts. So that's the year-end transfers in a nutshell. All, primarily, all departments were able to make up any shortfalls within their miscellaneous line items, and I really appreciate that from, from the finance director's standpoint. These were all transfers that would have had to come from free cash if they were not able to, to find it within their own funds.
Are there any questions, counselors, for Mr. Iannello or Mr. Vazquez? Ms. LaPlante?
Yes, thank you very much. So, you know, we had a lot of heat, probably a poor choice of words, near the end of the last fiscal year, last year, Counsel Vazquez, regarding the Fire Department and all the brownouts that we faced. And I know early on during, when there was the agreement that was struck between the mayor's office and the union leadership and the Fire Department, you know, the whole idea behind the agreement with dealing with, you know, they have X number of firefighters there, if they didn't have that benchmark or that, that number, then, for whatever reason, then they would have to have a brownout at that station. The understanding was that there was a, maybe some overtime money that could have been used to help float at least, and put it toward personal services for, so we wouldn't have the brownouts. Now, I just want you to be clear, this is the opportunity to essentially explain to us again, well, you and I have talked about this, but why couldn't we use that overtime account? And I think part of the answer is that we ran into a deficit in the Fire Department. Can you talk a little bit about that and explain that a little, little more detail?
Well, the Fire Department, and the Fire Department transfers on the bottom of Page One and at the top of Page Two of your, of the handout, and as you can see, the, originally there was $5,000 that was needed to come out of the Treasurer's Office to balance their line item budget. They were able to late, or earlier this week, or late last week, they were able to find initial $5,500 out of a repair and maintenance vehicles line item, so I was able to reduce the Treasurer's Office transfer from $5,000, I think it was $5,300 to $336 bucks. So they, all the $336 for the Fire Department was able to, the Fire Department was able to clear up all their deficit line items, primarily the permanent salaries and medical bills is what they really needed the money for. And again, medical bills for officer, firefighters out on injured-on-duty status. And all of the, the transfers from are all within the Fire Department accounts, and the transfers to, what, the permanent salaries and medical, medical bills for a total of $118,056. So the Fire Department, again, because we, we instituted some brownouts, were able to get through the year and all they needed to borrow from outside their department's So again, I want to thank the Fire Department and particularly Lieutenant Paul Macaron for scouring his depart, his accounts, doing all that he could to, to limit the exposure to the city.
So, I mean, my hope, first of all, we were lucky that there were, there were some major fires, we were able to deal with them reasonably well. There may have been a couple, the one on Tower Hill, for example, might have been one that if we had the, you know, engine, is it Engine Eight? That's the Amstree, if that was open, that might have been a quicker response time. But fortunately, there weren't too many. There were some, there were some firefighters that did suffer some injuries during that particular fire. I don't, I mean, I'm not sure, the seriousness, I think they were checked out, I think they were released fairly soon after they were checked into the hospital. But I think overall, we were very lucky for the last six or eight weeks of the, of the year that despite the large number of brownouts that we faced in the city, we were very lucky. Things could have been a heck of a lot worse, but we had, I think one of the firefighters said we were, we had horseshoe with us for those eight weeks, and we were very lucky. So my, my hope is that with this current year's budget, that, you know, the rumblings are that, you know, the, the overtime account may not be up to snuff, because we haven't really had any firefighters, we have a maintenance Fire Department staffing. So, you know, I hope that we don't set ourselves up for failure with the overtime numbers, that we're gonna face that same situation near the end of this fiscal year. I'm not sure if you'd comment on it, but that's just, I'm expressing my concern as we go forward.
Concern is well taken, Counsel, for the, for the, you know, public safety, police and fire. Overtime is a major portion of our budget. It's very difficult to foresee what they need at the beginning of the year. Overtime has many functions. Overtime can be caused by people out on vacation, it can be caused, somebody injured on duty and they need to cover the shift. And again, the same holds true for both police and fire. So it's very difficult to, to predict what the overtime is you, or how much overtime is needed. The, we've done the best we can last year and this year to fill their overtime and holiday pay and all the other types of pay that the public safety officers receive, and we've tried to be as realistic as we can. And you know, the mayor's initiative, particularly in the Police Department, was to add some police officers, and the Fire Department was to maintain the existing personnel that we had. And again, the loss of the Safer Grant last year, that was funded, that funded 37 firefighters. So that's quite an accomplishment in the last couple of years to maintain our public safety force and actually add to it. So I can assure you that this mayor's made a solid commitment to public safety, so I think now that the mayor will be on board for the entire fiscal year, maybe we can do a better job to prevent any brownouts.
Counsel President?
Counselors, any, anybody else? Mr. Toomey?
I'll yield.
Do you yield?
Sure.
Just for clarification, Mr. Iannello, for myself.
Yep.
I just want to follow this. For instance, in the Comptroller's Office, there was a total of $13,671 that was taken from, from two, to pay those other elements of personnel, Personnel Office longevity, which was $7,000, severance pay was $7,001, I believe. Personnel Office workers' compensation was $4,400. Is that, is that correct?
Those were, that's a miscellaneous transfer, there's, from the Comptroller's Office and from the Treasurer's Office of $732 to the Personnel Department. They had a shortfall in longevity account. I think somebody came eligible for longevity, and then the severance pay was, again, someone who left in the Personnel Department's office. And workers' comp is always a guess.
Okay, I'm just using it as an example.
Yep.
Okay, I understand it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salvares?
Yes. Thank you, Counsel President, through you. Hello, Mr. Anacello. Did I say Anacello? It is... I have a couple of questions regarding the firefighters as well.
Yes.
I know it has been a while since we fired any new firefighters, is that correct?
Um, I, I don't want to, I don't know if, again, firefighters have retired, they may have replaced a few firefighters, I'm not familiar, but we didn't, we didn't add additional firefighters to the city budget, if that's your question.
So we have not replaced the firefighters, fighters that have retired?
No, they may have. When, when, when a firefighter retires, they may have replaced one. I know, again, this is a civil service department, so, you know, I think during the budget hearings, the Fire Chief mentioned the process on, on, you know, a position becomes vacant, they've got to get a civil service list, they've got to choose off the list, takes many months to hire somebody under civil service regulations. Frank Benet is the expert on it, the Personnel Director Frank Benet, and the Fire Chief. But I'm, all I'm suggesting is that, or what I mentioned was, that we didn't add positions to the budget, we didn't hire, we didn't add additional firefighters to the budget. We did, we did so on the police side, but not the firefighter side.
Okay, so we didn't lose anyone other than people who retired?
So if people retire, there's money in their budget to fill those positions. If they can get the civil service, State Civil Service Department to act on lists and fill.
A few years back, we had a very healthy discourse with the Chief of Police then, and it turned out that when we looked at the numbers, it was healthier for us financially to have people on, on a regular pay, regular basis than to keep paying overtime. So I'm wondering if that's a discussion that you will be having in this coming year to see how much better we can do, because I know that the overtime expenses do exceed, at least from the kind of configuration that we did, it appears that overtime is much more costly than having a regular employee.
I know, it's, overtime is, is very difficult. I would love to have no overtime and have all police officers, obviously that would be better, maybe not for the police officers. But the problem is, when you hire a police officer, there's always overtime associated with that officer, because there, an officer doesn't just work a nine-to-five shift and then go off. If there's an arrest late in the shift, they've got to stay until the, and they're all, and they're all, so there always is overtime. We try and limit the amount of overtime, and we'd love to hire more officers, but hiring more officers doesn't automatically decrease overtime.
Well, that's an excellent example of how difficult it could be to predict overtime. There is the issue of going on vacation that you mentioned earlier this evening. If people are going on vacation, that should be something that we enter into our configuration for our budget, right? So, I mean, people, now we have that policy that if, if you don't use your vacation, you'll lose it. So there's got to be a way to deal with something that happens on a regular basis that employees are entitled to, where we don't have to deal with it as if it were a crisis, you know? Because when you deal with crises, you always spend more than, than you should.
Well, I, I think I'll defer those questions as Chief Fitzpatrick, but I do know that, you know, overtime sometimes is used to fund some additional patrol options, particularly in the summer months, we like to have more patrols in the summer than, and that's something that you would hire overtime for.
Right.
If you were having that patrol year-round, maybe you'd hire more police officers, but it would be targeted.
But it's not, that neighborhoods, particularly in the summer, because of the noise pollution, because of, you know, everything that's going on, the young people being out there and being mischievous, and it, it's something that is predictable, you know? So that's what I have a problem with, when we use overtime dollars to deal with areas that are predictable. We know every summer that's gonna be an issue, so why aren't we planning better for that? I mean, why aren't we budgeting?
Well, I think what I'm suggesting is they do budget for that. That is how they budget. They budget overtime.
Overtime?
Yeah, in other words, overtime, you, you wouldn't want to hire somebody full-time for 52 weeks if you're only going to use them for six, six weeks. What are they going to do the rest of the timeframe? So in other, so I'm, I'm not suggesting that it's quite that simple, but there is, but there is built into the Police Department budget, and I'll defer to the Police Chief how it's done, but he has X amount of, certain times of the year, he needs extra patrols out, whether it's a drug patrol, or whether it's a bar patrol, or, or a noise patrol and so forth.
Again, I'm insisting...
And those are generally done on overtime hours.
I'm insisting that if it's predictable, then there has to be a regular way to deal with it without having to pay overtime, which is much more costly to us. Now, if, if you can present the numbers along with these department heads that demonstrate that it is easier and budget-wise is healthier to deal with overtime rather than, you know, hiring people and having them on staff, or whatever other avenue they want to take, I would like to see those numbers, you know, what, what, what it is. Now, the other question that I have for you, because I don't want to continue with this discussion, because we do need the other people to be able to have, right, to have it fully. The other question that I have for you, how are projections going overall? I mean, I know snow and stuff is hard to predict, but there was a time where projections weren't going as well. There was a lot of transfers at the end of the year. There was also money that was sort of hidden by, by putting more of a cushion on... There was also money that was sort of hidden by, by putting more of a cushion on line items to then be able to have more money at the end, should you need it. So, I mean, I know that with it being so thin, we can't do that anymore, or...
Well, our budget is, we try and be fairly conservative with our revenue estimates, so we build a realistic budget. We don't want to build a budget that puts us in a deficit situation. We've, so far, as this year-end transfer suggests, we were able, we didn't have, there's no year-end transfers in here from free cash to bail this out. We did have the free cash transfer for the snow and ice account. We had the free cash transfer for, recently for some litigation pieces. But for operating budgets, there were, other than the snow and ice, there really wasn't any operating budget deficit. So I want to commend all of the department heads for managing their budget this year. Yes.
Because I saw there weren't any huge numbers. I mean, I'm seeing, the highest was what, $28,000? $35,000, maybe?
Well, some of the larger departments had different numbers than, than some of the smaller departments. But the managing within their budget and paying all their bills without requesting an additional appropriation is really, is really a difficult feat for some of these department heads to accomplish. They have a very, particularly John Asensio, he's got a lot in his DPW budget. An elevator goes down, a heating system goes down, it, it cost them $100,000.
Unexpected, yeah.
It's very difficult. But we have done well. We are, you know, this is the first day of July, as Counselor Vasquez indicated, Happy New Year. We, but this is the time we have to spend closing out our books, trying to, this year-end...
Balancing.
This year-end transfer process is estimating the last payroll of the year, trying to come up with what everybody's balances will be, and, and then closing the rest of our books, seeing how all of our revenues come in. As of yesterday, all of them, we need all of them posted as of yesterday. They haven't been posted yet. We need today and tomorrow, get all those revenues posted. The next couple of weeks, we'll be perusing all of the accounts and going through our normal closing process. And hopefully, at the end of July, we'll have some...
We close the budget?
Yes. We plan on closing somewhere around the 20, 2nd of July.
And just one quick question. I'm forgetting, because I was away for a while. Are the department heads, do they have the authority to move monies from one line item to another? And if so, up to how much is that?
They can, within the, if you, if you remember your, I didn't bring my copy of my budget, but in the beginning of the budget book is the appropriation order. And departments can move within the accounts within that order. So in general, for example, I'll take the comptroller's office. They have personal services, which is a, not the comptroller's, but the Budget and Finance Division. There's personal services, so I could transfer money within my personal service between the comptroller and the collector, or the collector to the treasurer, within the salary line items, without council approval. I can't transfer amounts from salaries to other purchase services without coming back to the council. So that's kind of, department heads, they don't have dollar limits. They can move within those, that appropriation order. And there's generally four or five line items within each department. They can't move money between travel and other purchase services, for example. But, but in general, there is some leeway that they have. And the only caveat we have under Chapter 58 or the overseer regulations is any transfer requires the overseer's approval. The city council approval is needed when we go between that authorization or budget authorization order. And then I have to come back to the council for that. So we don't do that very often.
Thank you so much, Director Antonello.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Counselors, any other questions? Mr. Iannolo, I have one, just one last question. After all the transfers, these monies take place, are there going to be any money left in the budget that are, that are going to be part of the, this year's free cash?
Yes, there are, there are going to be some excess appropriations. And when we close the books, those will, that is, there's two things, I'll just explain briefly, two things that impact free cash. Appropriation turnbacks, which is the amounts departments have not expended in full, that creates a free, that helps us next year creating some free cash. And also, revenues exceeding our estimates. At the beginning of the year, as you know, we come up with estimated revenues to support that budget document. And at the, when we close the year, any actual revenues exceeding those estimates, that creates a free cash position. So those are the two, generally the two components of free cash. We expect, as I think I mentioned last evening when we had a free cash vote, there's about 1.9 million left in free cash. So that hopefully will carry into next year. And also, some appropriation turnbacks and some additional, some positive revenue impacts will create, give us a new free cash number sometime around late fall. On October, end of October, early November, we'll get our free cash certified. We have to close the books, we have to file some year-end, a lot of year-end operating reports to Department of Revenue, and a bunch of, a lot of year-end work and analysis. And once that's all done, the state approves it, they'll send us a letter certifying our free cash.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, if there are no other questions, there is a motion on the floor. It has been properly seconded. Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Iannolo.
Thank you.
Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee, you have several documents there that we would like to move forward, starting with Document 3313.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, document? Document number 33-13 was mediation of foreclosures for owner-occupied residential properties. This had come out of the subcommittee, actually, this was put on the agenda by Counselor Vasquez, and I just want to give him credit. The subcommittee had asked it to go to Attorney Body or to the City Attorney's Office for review of the language, and then to order a public hearing. It looks as if it was sponsored by Attorney Body, so I just want to clarify that for the record. But basically, many of you will remember, about a year ago, we adopted an ordinance here in the city to allow for the mediation of foreclosures, or actually, to mandate the mediation of owner-occupied properties, much like the City of Springfield had done before us. We modeled their ordinance. And as time has played out, the City of Springfield was sued by several banks, and they won the lawsuit. However, the suit's being appealed by the banks. The City of Lynn, however, has a very similar but slightly different ordinance, and theirs has not been challenged by any banks in the courts, and it's actually been successful, and they've been moving forward with mediation. So the request was to modify our ordinance so that it better reflected the Lynn ordinance. And I apologize for not knowing the name of the group, maybe Counselor Vasquez could help me, but the, I don't know if it's Legal Services or...
Merrimack Valley Project.
That's correct. It's Neighborhood Legal Services and the Merrimack Valley Project.
Yep, they had come in, and they actually, in your packages, they've outlined the changes. But basically, tonight, we just, it came up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing for that change in any requisite language from the city attorney, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to order a public hearing for this document. Any questions? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Madam Chair, with Document 19814.
Thank you, Council President. Document number 19814 was a secondhand dealer license requested by Maria Tiro. She's at 181 Canal Street. Ms. Tiro was at the subcommittee level, her paperwork was in order, and she did come up with unanimous favorable recommendation to approve this renewal, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any questions? Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Madam Chair, continue.
Thank you, Council President. The next one is document number 221-14. This was a transient vendor license with, which was Double N Inc., which is doing business as House Pizza. They're at 354 Merrimack Street. It was requested by Joe Bevelacqua Jr. of LePoli Companies. It came up from the subcommittee without recommendation, and I make that in the form of a committee report.
There's a motion to accept this document as a committee report. It has been properly seconded. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Chair, continue.
Thank you. I was told by the clerk that the paperwork has been filed. I don't see it in my packet, but, okay, no, no problem. But I guess, I apologize, I don't have the paperwork, so can I just look at it?
Sure.
Sorry, thank you, Counselor. The application license, which comes from the Inspection Services Office, is here. The sign-off from the State for the Hawkers and Peddlers license is here. The sign-off from the Fire Department is here.
You don't have it?
You don't have it. I'm looking at it, so I'm letting you know that it's here. The assessor's approval is here. The police one was the one that is missing. And the verification from the assessors that the tax stamps are in order, the water department bills for the owner are in order, and the inspectional services are in order. There's no outstanding issues with any of those departments. It's all here. So it looks like the only, they have the certificate of good standing from the Secretary of State also. The only one that's missing is the police. So I'll be making a motion to approve this new license pending the receipt of the sign-off from the Police Department.
There's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly seconded. Any, any questions?
Question?
Yes.
It's, it's just missing the police piece?
Yeah, the police have not signed the form that's in there.
Counselors.
Yeah, and I was just curious as to where...
Mrs. Salvares, can I, do you have the document now?
I don't, if I may. We did get our fingerprints completed. The query has been submitted. We just haven't received the query paperwork back yet. That's what, the police are waiting.
Continue, Mrs. Salvares.
Since he's here, is that Bevelacqua Jr.?
Yes.
How are you?
How are you?
I was just curious where it's transient, so you expect to be moving around the city?
Right, so, around the city and bring it to different events that the city has, different festivals and carnivals. That's one of the concepts we, we thought of, so.
So you want to be part of the various festivals, and would that be the only use?
Nope, bring it, you know, drive it around the city as well.
So you'll be going out for whoever every day? Is that the idea, or?
So we'll see, you know, we're still developing the concept. We're here right now just to try to, you know, get it approved, and then, it's a brand-new truck, it's a 2014, it was custom-built for us, all brand-new equipment, so we're excited about this and looking forward to it.
So is there going to be any free pizza and stuff? For the children, discount? No, no. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, Council President.
There is a motion on the floor to approve pending.
Please sign off. The police sign off.
The Police Department sign off. And it has been properly seconded. Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Madam Chair, continue.
Thank you, Council President. Again, at that same meeting on June 19th, a representative from Groundworks Lawrence did present, they want to hold a 5K run-and-walk on September 21st from 8:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Kennedy Playground, the Greenway area and Pemberton Park. It was requested by Mary Beth Burnwood. The biggest issue with the walks and runs is, we always ask if they have had Lieutenant Conway approve their route, and they did have that. So it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Questions? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Can you give me a list of the running route?
I don't know if we have it, but, so we can get it for you.
You want to run?
I might want to run, but more importantly, a lot of these races go through my neighborhood, and if I can give them a heads up, I'm not sure if this is one of them.
This doesn't, it's through the Kennedy Playground, the Greenway and Pemberton Park, so it's on this side of the river.
Yeah.
But we can get you the list, I don't, yeah. Yeah, actually, in the, the police sign off, it's there. But it sounds like it's down by the Spicket River more than...
Okay. Thank you.
So, we voted, right?
Yeah.
Next document is also with Groundworks Lawrence. They had requested at that same June 19th meeting their permission to hold a farmer's market on the Campagnone Common Park from July 9th through September 29th, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. on Wednesdays. This was requested by Rosa Pina, and was also co-sponsored by Counsel Vasquez. It came up from the Ordinance Subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Questions? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Document number 232-14 was a caregiver's home. They were requesting permission to use the Campagnone Common Park at the corner of Havrell and Jackson Streets on Wednesdays from July 2nd through September 10th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. to set up an informational table. This was requested by Amarta S. Romero. It did come up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Comments or questions? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Oppose?
Counsel Vasquez.
Abstain.
Counsel Plant.
Yes.
Counsel Toomey.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Almonte.
Yes.
Counsel Aquino.
Yes.
Counsel, ladies President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Counsel President Maldonado.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. At the same meeting, document number 233-14 was a transient vendor license requested by a Jose Roman at 665 Essex Street. This is a renewal, and it did come up from the Ordinance Committee with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any questions? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Council President. Document number 234-14 is the Granite United Church. The agenda is actually slightly backwards. They had requested permission to use the Pemberton Park for a festival, but the festival also includes a basketball tournament, and they had already requested Sullivan Park for a different event on the same day. So they're requesting permission to use Sullivan Park for a much larger festival, which is their Hope and Outreach Event, and that will be on August 23rd from 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. and that has a rain date of August 30th. It did come up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded.
Discussion.
Yes.
Just to know that there was a very, very good discussion at the committee level where we know that this organization has been helping the homeless, indigene folks, and although they're going to be offering information and support and services at that time to, to the homeless and to the poorest in our city, the children will be on the other side of the park, because there's seen, at the time, to be some concern about the mixing of the two groups. But the park is sufficiently, you know, big that you can have both things happen without collision from the two groups. Because they needed to be able to help each other and do it as a team. So that's why they decided that staying in Sullivan Park to have both events would be the ideal thing, and we agreed.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. If there are no other comments, I'm sorry?
Discussion.
Yes.
So this is a residential area, you've got North Parish Road, you've got the Stadium Projects, which is nearby, you have Clendale Heights on the other side as well. I see that has, have music on there. I just want to make, I know it's during the day at all, but is there any kind of assurances that the music's going to be, it's all a matter of taste, of course, at a certain level that does not impede the people who live on North Parish Road, Stadium Projects and elsewhere?
No, it's, it's going to be the...
We have the, we have the young lady here that can probably can answer that question.
Hi, how are you?
And our chair is always good.
Good evening. Priscilla Baez, 23, Dolly Lane. To answer your question with regards to music, it is going to be held at a very low standard. It's just enough that we can hear the music within the group and stuff, so it's not going to be something that's going to interfere with the residents.
Just, if you don't mind, just be, I'm glad that you're cautious and cognizant of that, just continue to be cognizant of that and aware of that as the event goes on.
Of course.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Any other questions? Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Oh, she gets that from Nelson. Sorry, thank you. The... I apologize, I was totally distracted. Document number 243-14 is a block party called Cee Low Via. It was requesting to close Essex Street between Union Street and Lawrence Streets, including the block of Common Street on Sunday, August 3rd, 2014, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. This was put on the agenda by Council Vasquez. Came up from the Subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to approve, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any questions?
Just a point of information, it is a big area, but basically what they're doing is they're creating a pedestrian way for that whole block, and it's a time of day that's usually kind of dead in that area, the masses are over, the people that have come for church and things have gone home, the restaurants aren't really picking up till suppertime. So they're encouraging people to come and walk, to ride your bicycles, skateboard, whatever you want to do, but it's to get people out in the community together to kind of intermingle, and it's something that's done in other communities pretty frequently, and it sounded like kind of a neat idea. There was a lot of back and forth, it has actually been reviewed pretty thoroughly with Officer Conway, and they've done a lot of outreach to the stores in the area who actually embrace it because they think it will bring them some crowds in a time that they're usually dead. So it came up with a lot of discussion, but it came with unanimous favorable recommendation, and it sounds like a kind of a neat idea.
Can you come forward, please?
Yeah.
Please identify yourself.
Good evenings, councilors. My name is Alicia Miller, I, 39 Elm Street in Methuen.
Rosa Pina, 24 Brook Street.
At the Subcommittee level, there was a suggestion that you contact the different vendors that have parking space off, right off Essex Street. Were you able to do that at all?
Along with Dan McCarthy, with the Development Department, we've been working with all the businesses in that area, so we're trying to cover everything because the city is completely involved in this project. So this is actually a mayor's, the mayor's event.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vasquez?
No, just, thank you, Ms...
I couldn't hear.
Can you repeat that?
Your last sentence.
Your last sentence, the mayor said what?
This is the Mayor Health Task Force, and actually, the mayor is completely involved, and he has approved everything, so we are working with the different departments, with the Community Development Department, and different departments within the city.
So they'll be able to park?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify something, but I believe Rosa just mentioned it, that this, even though I put it on the agenda, it was actually on behalf of the Mayor's Health Task Force, along with Vilma, Laura, Alicia Miller, who's here tonight, and Rosa Pinas, who's also here tonight. So I placed it, but the great idea came from the Mayor's Health Task Force, along with this three wonderful, hard-working women who are doing great things for the city of Lawrence.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, and properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Document number 247-14 was with regard to Bradford Street. We're requesting to convert it back, or not back, but to a 2A Street. This was put on the agenda by Mayor Rivera. Came up from the Ordinance Committee with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and I believe it's to order a public hearing.
Yes.
In any requisite language from the City Attorney's Office, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing on document 247-14. It has been properly second. Any questions or comments? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Madam Chair, the last document, 248-14.
Document number 248-14 is Blanco Arriba presente. They require, requesting permission to use the Manchester Street Park to hold a community meeting, interact, on Sunday, August 24th, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This was requested by Ricardo Fabian and Ricardo de Jesus. This came up from the Ordinance Subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Okay, that concludes the documents from the Ordinance Committee. We're going to go into the Personal Committee, document 214-14. Madam Chair of the Personal Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Document 214-14 is the appointment to the Bellevue Cemetery Board for a two-year term of Ms. Kathleen Darwin, and she'll be filling a two-year term to expire October 2015, and it is replacing Susan Dowd. That was sent up with a favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions?
Is she here?
No.
Katie's here, yeah.
Yes.
Name an address for the record, please.
Pardon me?
Name an address for the record.
Kathleen Darwin, 14 Mount Auburn Street, Lawrence, Mass.
Thank you. Any questions for the...
Councilors, are there any questions for...
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
What sparked your interest? Were you doing this before, or this was this new appointment?
No, I actually attended the Memorial Day Service at the Bellevue Cemetery.
Uh-huh.
And in talking with some folks, heard of some of the challenges and the need and need for volunteers, so I submitted my name.
Great.
Because I'm recently retired, and I have the time to commit to helping out, so...
Oh, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a vote, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Madam Chair, document 215-14.
Document 215-14 is an appointment to the Bellevue Cemetery Board for a three-year term, and it's to expire on March of 2015, and this is replacing Mary Lou Body, and this is the nominations for Mr. Thomas B. Kerrigan. And I make that in form of, it came up with a favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions? Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, he's here.
Oh, okay.
Again, let's take a vote again. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Corrigan. Okay. Document 216-14 is the, a new appointment for the Council on Aging for a three-year term of Ms. Nancy Corrigan. It was sent out without a recommendation because she did not attend the meeting, and we were pending her attendance here tonight. So is Ms. Corrigan here?
Yes.
Nancy?
Thank you.
Nancy, will you come forward, please?
Could you please come to the podium? Thank you. So it was sent up without a favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion? Without a recommendation, sorry.
So that's the committee report?
It is.
Second.
Motion has been made to accept as a committee report. It has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Nancy, can you please tell us a little bit about yourself, so that the members of the council will get to know you a little better?
Sure. I actually spoke to you at the last meeting, or the meeting before that, on the residency requirement, so I'm not sure if you remember the information that I gave you. My name is Nancy Corrigan. I'm 70 years old, was born and raised in the city of Lawrence, still live in Lawrence in the Mount Vernon area. I am very concerned about the city of Lawrence, and I hope it's going in the right direction, which I think it is. I'm excited to be part of it. I served as, on the Advisory Committee for the Community Development Board, and I found it to be an extremely positive experience. It was a great, great meeting, and I met a lot of very interesting people in the city. I want to be involved. I think the Council of Aging is a great, a great committee to be on, because I think you're able to help to put programs in effect that will benefit the seniors of Lawrence, because we certainly have a lot of seniors, and I hope I do a good job.
Gentlemen, are there any questions, councilors? Any question for Ms. Corrigan?
Thank you to you, Council President. Hi, I'm glad to see that you, you know, have accepted an appointment. Let's, if the Council on Aging is one of the agencies that I adore, because during my time, I've seen it go through all these changes. It's really evolved. And how do you feel about the diversity of the council now versus how it used to be?
The diversity of the council? Oh, I think it's great. I think you have to have a diverse council in order to bring the city together, to make it flourish. I think you need input from all walks of life, and I truly, I truly believe that.
I love the way that they have the, the exercise programs where they use some latticero music.
Right, right, yeah.
Or rock.
Yeah.
And also that they brought in Asian community.
Exactly.
So they, they have the Chinese there, the Vietnamese, and Cambodian.
Well, I think the head of the program is just so involved in everything, and she's so enthusiastic, and she just wants it all to work, and, you know, bring all the communities together, so...
And given everything that people are experiencing, like I know a lot of the people who are going to the council, and some who are not encouraged to, because they may be a little bit afraid, you have to, you have to help, you know, motivate them to come, you know, there are all these issues about not being able to meet the co-pays for medicine, and, you know, health insurance not being what it needs to be and stuff, so you're right, there are a lot of challenges, and I'm glad that you're willing to take that on and to be a voice.
Yeah, I'm willing to take that on. I'm a former human resource person for 38 years, I think, and...
Look at that.
So I know it, I know it, I know the benefits, I know the, you know, the obstacles that people and their families face, whether it's, you know, addictions or sicknesses or whatever, and being out of work, and not being able to afford such things, and I've dealt with it for a long, long time, so I think I'll be pretty good on the program, and I'm not afraid to speak up, for sure. I, and I'm just an advocate of the whole program.
Did you just say you weren't a great speaker?
Pardon me?
What did you say before?
She's not afraid to speak her mind.
I'm not afraid to speak up.
Exactly.
Oh, you're not afraid to speak? Oh, okay. I thought you were saying, I don't think I'm a great speaker.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Why didn't you say that?
I have no fears of speaking up, and I'm...
No, I think you're, you're excellent. It'd be, you know, my pleasure to give you my vote, and also to come and see you from time to time.
Well, thank you very much.
It's my favorite agency.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilors, unless there's any other questions, I would like to take a vote.
Motion to approve?
Yes, second.
We took a...
It's a committee report.
Committee report, so there is a motion now to...
To accept it.
Approve.
To approve.
And it has been properly second. Any questions? Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Next document on the agenda is document 217-14, which is a... Reappointment to the Lawrence Municipal Airport Commission for a three-year term of Ms. Sharon Birchall. And that was sent up with a favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions, councilors? Do you have a question?
Yes.
Oh, you do.
Ms. Birchall.
Sharon?
We request your, your presence at the podium.
Good evening, councilors.
Thank you.
Through you, Council President.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you look wonderful, you got a great tan.
Thank you.
It's great to see you. Could you just give me a quick idea of why you're doing this with the airport?
What we do at the airport?
Right, why you find that this is a fantastic idea to be part of the airport?
Well, I've been on it for six years now. We make decisions on the hangars, people that come in and want to build their business at the Lawrence Airport, and I want to continue to make the Lawrence Airport the best airport in the Commonwealth.
So you've been doing this for a while now then?
Six years.
Oh, fantastic. All right. Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions, let's take...
What's the makeup of the, of the airport? How many people from Lawrence, how many people from the other communities?
We have the director...
The manager, Mike Mill, knows that.
Oh, yeah.
One from Andover, one from North Andover, and one from...
Good evening, councilors. Mike Mill, the airport manager, 90 South Bowden Street in Lawrence. Through you, Mr. President. Mr.?
Chair, I'll repeat my question. So what is the makeup of the airport by, by community?
Presently sitting on the board, or the ordinance?
By statute or by ordinance?
By statute. The statute is pretty broad and just allows the city or town to establish the criterion for the Airport Commission. By statute, you can have between three and 11 members. The city of Lawrence has nine. In the ordinance, that relates to boards and commissions, it states that you would be, have to be a member of this, a resident of the city of Lawrence, to be a member of a board or commission of the city, with the exception of the Airport Commission. Three members can come from outside the city of Lawrence presently, before you tonight as well, with some of the appointments or reappointments. There is a person from North Andover, he was appointed back in September, and there are two people who will be from the town of Methuen, if the council sees fit to approve their nomination. So there are six members from the city of Lawrence, one from North Andover, and two from Methuen.
And all those individuals, all 11, we approve?
There's only nine. The city of Lawrence has nine.
Nine.
Correct. The nomination is to the mayor's office with confirmation by the council.
And how do we get the word out to the communities that these are openings? How do we, how does that happen?
It's, again, the mayor is the nominating authority. There's no mandate that anyone from outside of the city of Lawrence come to the Airport Commission. However, as a courtesy, most administrations, in my experience working at the airport, have reached out to the two communities that it burdens most, North Andover and Methuen. How that's expressed, I'm not sure. I know in the past, mayor's offices had good relationships with town managers and mayors and requested, uh, names for nominees.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no other question, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Council President. Through you, uh, Document 21814, which is a reappointment to the Lawrence Municipal Airport for a three-year term of Mr. Charles Colofolis.
There is Charles?
Come on down, you handsome man, you...
You are the next... Next contestant.
Good evening, councilors. Charlie Colofolis, thirty-three Eighth Street, Lawrence, Mass. What kind of questions?
Madam Chair, you, uh, are you making a motion?
Yes, and, um, he was, it was, he was sent up with a favorable recommendation, I made that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions for Mr. Colofolis?
Yes, um, may I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, just, just very quickly, Mr. Colofolis, you have been on the Airport Commission for a very long time, and you have seen all of the different changes that have gone on.
Well, I, I, uh, one might, uh, person who was with us, Arlene, way back. I've been fourteen years on the airport. I started with the, uh, I've been chairman twice, I've been vice chair. I am, uh, lease manager, lease, uh, the lease man for the, uh, airport. I have ten years, eleven years. We leased probably eighty percent of the land, which is aviation land, not non-aviation. Uh, I think we had twenty acres left to go and probably three big buildings of, we'd be getting it. That's it for me. I'm done.
But a lot has happened.
My last term.
Thank you for serving, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions?
I have a question. How long's the term?
Three-year, three-year term.
Okay, are all of them a three-year terms?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Next, we have Document 21914, which is the reappointment to the Lawrence Municipal Airport Commission for a three-year term of Mr. Andres Castillo. That was also sent up with a favorable recommendation, I made that in form of a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, Mr. Castillo. Who are you, Andres?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mr. Lina...
Have any questions? Have any question for Mr. Castillo?
Yes, I have.
Yes, go ahead.
And a comment. Um, Mr. Castillo has been a, a wonderful Laurentian and has always participated in community, and is an extraordinary father and a family man, and it's always a pleasure for me to support his endeavors. Um, tell the rest of the group why, why you think it's a good idea for you to continue to serve on the Airport Commission.
Want to say my name? My name is Andres Castillo, I live in, uh, eighty-two Blanchest Street in Lawrence.
Mm-hmm.
I'm in the commission for quite a few year, and I've been living in Lawrence for many years, so...
Right.
You know me from before, and, um, I like to keep doing something for the city, and I think participating as an, uh, airport commissioner is the best thing I can do of this time, because I've been doing it, I'm happy with, happy with this, and I like everybody.
Well, thank you.
Uh, if there are no, no other questions, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Document 22014.
22014, last but not least. We have the appointment to the Municipal Airport Commission, it's a reappointment. Or actually, um, no, it's a candidate for appointment to the Lawrence Municipal Airport Commission.
My name's Jack Fitzpatrick.
Of course it's Jack.
Don't know me here?
It's for a three-year...
I, uh, shared for ten years already on the Airport Commission, and I'm back for a reappointment.
Um, it says here that it's for a three-year term to replace Adonza Pereira, and that was sent up with a favorable recommendation, and I made that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions for John?
Jet engine over at the airport.
Just a comment, um, I, I wanted to share that, uh, John...
Yes, sir. Okay.
I'm just sharing, Jack, that you've been a wonderful individual, community person. Um, although you're in Methuen, I can find you in any event in Lawrence, always supporting, you know, what's going on. So, it's great to, to see that you are still...
Thank you.
...willing to continue to support Lawrence and, and to, you know, do the best that you can to help move it forward. Thank you so much, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair of the...
Thank you, Council President.
Personal committee. Uh, we have two, three more documents, uh, from committee report, Budget on Finance, Document 24914. Uh, Chair of the, uh, Budget on Finance, Mr. Vazquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item came from, um, uh, Ms. Jarenello on behalf of the, the mayor. Uh, it's a fiscal year 2015 supplemental budget from the council cuts that we took about two weeks ago on the amount of forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars, and each of the, the requests is detailed, but the request here is for forty thousand. If you notice, um, on the sheet that was provided to us, it says forty-six thousand, so there's, um, a, a discrepancy there in the, in that particular amount.
Yeah, making a motion to...
To accept it.
Order a public hearing.
Yes.
Order a public hearing.
So I make a motion to order the public hearing, but I...
Okay, second.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing on Document 24914. It has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Continue. Mr. Chair of the Budget on Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Document, um, 25214 is an authorization to spend Community Health Initiative award. Uh, this is a grant. It was placed on the agenda by Mr. Barnes on the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars, and I make a motion to accept.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve Document 25214. It has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Uh, okay, uh, Madam Chair of the committee as a whole?
Hey, write it down, this may be the only report, I guess. Um, yes, Council President and fellow colleagues, um, the committee of the whole met and unanimously voted in favor of adopting the Office of Planning and Development Reorganization submitted by Mayor Dan Rivera.
Second.
I believe that we are supposed to order, we had a public hearing.
We have the public hearing.
We already had a public hearing, but it says, uh, recommendation to order a public hearing.
That was prior, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right, so...
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and discussion?
Uh, there's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second discussion. Go ahead.
Yes, um, I, I think when I, when I said the motion and I said, "submitted by Mayor, uh, Dan Rivera," I did not mention that there were some revisions and some changes from healthy discussion that took place, and from people's own, you know, um, I guess state of agency, they were able to, uh, make the changes and revisions they thought were needed, so, and it was an amicable, uh, discourse.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it? Unless there are any questions or any further discussion beyond the ones that we had last night?
But, but it's not...
Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Okay, um...
Is that, Council President, when does that become effective?
I believe that that becomes effective July first, because we approved certain items and they are in the budget, so...
Yeah.
I'm thinking they want to get started on it, like tomorrow.
We have to wait the thirty...
Motion to waive the thirty days?
There's a motion on the floor to waive the thirty days.
All right, I'll second.
Motion has been properly second.
I'll second.
Or in favor, say, uh, discussion?
Aye.
Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, God, you, you guys must be tired. Uh, let's take a vote again. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you. Show me some energy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um...
Withdraw.
There are two items, eighty-six fourteen and eighty-seven fourteen, uh, that needs to be withdrawn. I would like to enter turn a motion to withdraw, the motion to take those two documents as a block to withdraw.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Okay, uh, are there any table matters that the members of the council would like to take out of, to discuss? If there is none, great, fantastic. I think we had a last, uh, long night last night, so... Uh, there is a matter that we need to take as an emergency, uh, submitted by Councilor Bernard. Um, we haven't assigned a number, am I correct? Uh, okay, can we assign a number on the, to this document?
Two sixty-seven fourteen.
Two sixty-seven fourteen. Um, I need to, I need a motion to take this document, uh, to suspend the rules.
Yes.
Motion has been made to suspend the rule, and, uh, it has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Discussion, discussion? What, I have no idea what this is.
Oh, this is, I'm sorry, uh, internal transfer of funds of the library.
For the library?
It's going to committee, it's just to get on...
I have no idea what it is. I just want to know.
Internal...
Okay.
Well, I've got to make two motions, one was to suspend the rules, and then the second was to add the document to the agenda, so the first...
Oh, I understand. I have no idea what I'm suspending the rules for. Okay, now I know.
Okay.
Internal transfer...
Let's take a vote again. Uh, again, the motion is to suspend the rules, okay? So we are voting on that. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Uh, this document is going to go to the budget...
The President just put it on.
I'm sorry?
No, no, I just thought you could just put it on. We've done before.
No.
Okay.
Uh, this document is going to the Budget on Finance Committee, okay? Document two sixty-seven fourteen. Uh, okay. Uh, new business. Document two fifty-three fourteen zoning board of appeals, uh, nomination, um, yeah, nomination for committee, for, of board, is going to the, uh, personal committee. Uh, Document two fifty-four fourteen Centro Cristiano Emanuel, uh, is going to the ordinance committee. Document two fifty-five fourteen Salvation Army, request permission to use the Campagnon Common, Common Park, is going to the ordinance committee. Document two fifty-six fourteen Block Party, request the block of Cypress Street between Esses and Pell Street, is going to the ordinance committee. Document two fifty-seven fourteen Loading Zone, five thirty SS Street, is going to the ordinance committee. Document two fifty-eight fourteen Greater Alliance Committee Action Council, request permission to use the, uh, park, is going to the ordinance committee. Document two fifty-nine fourteen Transient Vendor License, ninety-two Haver Street, is going to the ordinance committee. Document two sixty fourteen Transient Vendor License, ninety-two Haver Street, is going to the ordinance committee. Is that a repetition of document?
This one, Loading Zone?
No, they're having, uh, they...
Two separate ones?
For two vehicles.
Okay, okay. Uh, Document two sixty-one fourteen Appointment Lawrence Airport Commission, is going to the personal committee. Document two sixty-two fourteen Zoning Ordinance, proposed amendment, uh, is going to the ordinance committee.
Send that also to, uh, planning.
I'm sorry?
Send it also to planning.
Oh, to planning, to the, okay.
We have to have a public hearing at that.
So Document two sixty-two fourteen is going to the ordinance committee and the...
And planning.
Planning.
Please.
Document two sixty-three fourteen Transient Vendor License, ice cream, uh, truck, is going to the ordinance committee. And finally, Document two sixty-five fourteen Dursa Avenue, right turn prohibited, is going to the ordinance committee. Uh, councilors, are there any items that you would like to discuss now?
The only item is, when we talk about the new committee meetings, because of the Fourth of July holiday and the Lawrence celebration is on the third of July, the ordinance committee is not going to meet on July third.
Okay.
We've agreed to meet on, sorry, the ordinance committee is not going to meet on July third. We're going to meet on July seventeenth instead, so I just want to make sure people are aware of that.
Okay, July seventeenth, the ordinance committee. All right.
Is there any, any housing...
Mr. President?
How about the, uh, Budget on Finance Committee?
Budget on Finance Committee will not be meeting on tomorrow.
You will not?
No, we will not be. We will meet as regularly scheduled following two weeks.
The following two weeks.
Okay. Any other information?
And personnel.
Uh, I'm sorry, personnel?
Personnel will be meeting on July fourteenth at seven PM, the two appointments that were made tonight.
Okay, Ms. Roplan?
I was going to ask a question. Are we having a summer schedule or not?
Uh, yes, we are.
I'll base it on the summer schedule.
When, when does summer schedule starts, anyway?
Yesterday.
Summer started around twenty-second.
Oh, yes. Uh, the summer schedule is, uh, okay.
I think, Ms. Roplan, will you refresh my memory, uh, what, what?
We should meet once in August.
Sure, so we...
What is the summer schedule?
Essentially, we meet once a month rather than twice a month.
The, uh, council.
Council.
And the committees, and the committees also meet only once.
As needed and typically...
Or as needed.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, councilors, as of today, we start our summer schedule.
Woo-hoo!
Okay?
Yay! We earned it.
Okay, uh, I know, I know we had a...
I'm talking about special meetings.
Except when we need, I hope not, I hope not. I hope that we don't need any special meetings, but, uh, let me say, yes, uh...
It, it was sent to the ordinance committee.
Right, but if it's not, it's supposed to be a week, so it would be, it would hurt. When is our next, uh, council meeting?
August fifth?
No, the national night out, we don't meet that night. We're going to, this is the nineteenth, fifteen August, because of the national night out.
So, do you think, uh, we'll, uh...
Can I see, can I see that, please?
Item two fifty-eight fourteen.
If all, if all the sign-offs are here...
It's supposed to happen on the seventeenth of this month?
Thirteenth of August.
The third of this month?
Of August.
Of August.
You don't mean...
Okay, and we are not meeting, yes, okay, okay.
So I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made to suspend the rule, and we have a document to suspend the rule to, uh...
To be able to deal with this document on an emergency basis, deal, because of the dates.
Oh, two fifty-eight, two fifty-eight fourteen, okay. Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor to suspend the rule, and it has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Okay, um...
I would like to, um, handle Document two fifty-eight fourteen on an emergency basis.
There's a motion to take Document two fifty-eight fourteen on an emergency basis. It has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Okay, um...
Do we have all of the sign-offs?
Do we have all the documents?
You got it there?
The document's actually in our packet. The paperwork on that item is... The paperwork's in your packet. The signups from the department. Looks like, um, the story says you'll take care of this and certainly refer back down to him because he has a calendar and he uses calendars, so he would be...
It's conditional that there's no conflicts or anything else, right? We don't know that yet.
This was actually submitted by Nelson Ortiz, and he maintains the calendar, so...
And that makes it pretty simple then, doesn't it?
Yeah, he usually doesn't make it this far unless there's an available date.
Okay, so is there anything more that you?
Well, let's, let's, let's hear what it is.
This will be the sec, my name's Marisa Melendez, 64 Oregon Avenue, Lawrence, Mass. This is going to be the Second Annual Resource Fair, and what it entails is we've invited over 50 organizations who set up in the park and provide information on resources available to the families of the city of Lawrence that can lead them on the road to success. We have social service, we have health agencies, we have education organizations, we have youth activities, we have financial literacy, banks, so any organizations invited to provide resources. Last year was our first. We had 800 families who registered for the event. And we're aiming for more. We also provide gifts and backpacks to the kids that have to register. They have to visit the organization tables and get the information, so it's not just come and get a backpack. They actually have to talk to the different organizations. The only reason I asked for an emergency is because I know that you're not, you're going on vacation. You won't be meeting till after the event, so we're asking for approval for August 3rd from 3:00 to 6:00 in the North Calmen.
Well, I move that we approve this item.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to approve this item. Are there any questions for Mrs. Melendez?
I just have like a comment. The first year that they came around, it was like a huge, like she says, like over 800 families came out to the event. This is something that definitely, and Marisa works very hard to, you know, put these events together, and, and I want to thank you for that because a lot of people don't have the time to go around and to visit all the agencies all at once, and this way, we have a lot of new resources that are being provided to the city, and this is one avenue that people will know what avenues we have available for them, and there being so many new resources within the city, it's always great to revise those and let people know what is still available for them to have. A lot of closure programs, and I'm sure the banks are going to be there, are going to be able to be there to give information. Youth service programs also is a great area and target, so I want to thank the Great Lawrence Community Action Council and Marisa for putting this together again for the second year. So good success, and I'm hoping that we continue to have these events. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Marisa, did I hear you correctly saying that it was August 3rd?
August 13th, I'm sorry, August 13th.
Okay, okay, good.
The Wednesday before school starts.
And for the families at home, this is on Wednesday, August 13th. It will be at our Campagnon Park, and it will be from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. So once again, Wednesday, August 13th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at our Campagnon Park.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, unless, any questions, Mr. Tumi?
Also.
No, there's a, I'm sorry, there's a motion on the floor. It has been properly second to approve. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it.
Thank you. Hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Well, councilors.
There's four people with the same problem.
Two more items with the same problem.
Oh, two more?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Council President.
There goes our summer.
Take care of this tonight. We'll come back here for another meeting.
Exactly.
Council President, if you look at document number 254-14 is Centro Cristiano Emanuel, they're requesting permission to use Campagnon Common Park on August 17th, and we will not, probably, I mean, we usually don't meet the first time because of National Night Out. We usually meet the 3rd Tuesday, so we wouldn't have met. The paperwork is in order. It is signed off by the different department heads.
So you want to suspend the rules?
So I'm, I was making...
Morales here?
No.
Mr. Morales left?
Yeah. But I wanted to make a motion to suspend the rules to take document 254-14.
There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, and it has been properly second. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it.
I make a motion to approve 254?
Second.
Motion has been made to approve the doc, the, this document, and it has been properly...
Point of order.
Yes.
We need to handle it as an emergency.
Is that suspending the rules?
And then emergency, you know?
It's usually involved in the suspension of the rules for emergency.
So I did an extra step for nothing?
Oh, look at that.
Alright.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second to approve. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. Any other item?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Document number 256-14 is a block party. They're requesting to block off Cypress Street between Essex Street and Pearl Streets on Saturday, July 19th from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It's requested by Analuus Garcia.
There's a motion on the floor to go beyond.
Aye.
At the clock? No, we don't have to do that. Nine. It only feels like 10.
Sorry, yes, it feels like 10. I'm sorry. Okay, the motion was to suspend the rule.
Suspend the rules.
And it has been properly second.
Probably second.
Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. Continue.
So I've been making a motion to approve the request for block party on Cypress Street between Essex and Pearl Streets.
There's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second. Is Analuus Garcia here?
No.
No.
Okay. Are there any, are there any, any comments or questions before we take a vote?
We have all the signups though.
Okay. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. That's it?
That's it. What are you here for? That's not tonight.
Committee.
Oh, that was sent through ordinance committee meeting.
Yeah.
So ordinance, if it's not up to ordinance, ordinance will have...
We're going to be here on July 17th. Yeah.
Six or seven?
Seven. Seven.
So the 17th, that's us.
They sent through this whole thing.
Kate, did we miss anything, Kate?
Two. No.
That's where we're about to talk about.
August 19th.
August 19th.
Unless there's an emergency.
Right, Housing Committee, Housing Committee. Housing Committee on the 14th of July. We're going to piggyback on the, on Personnel. So you want to meet at 6:30?
It's already in for 7:00, so I don't know if you wanted to do housing at 6:30?
No.
Personnel's already in for 7:00 since like last week. I set it up with Lily because she's going to be on vacation.
How long's that going to be?
Two appointments, 50 appointments, 50 minutes.
7:30.
One to 7:30.
7:30.
It will be pretty fair.
For housing?
Housing, 7:30 in the 19th.
7:30.
On the 14th.
On the 14th?
14th, 7 o'clock for Personnel, 7:30 for Housing.
Is that on Monday?
7:30 is good.
Yes, it's a Monday. Are there any other items?
No.
Councilors.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn. It has been properly second. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. Well, we finished 9 o'clock.